I have a motion to come back from executive session.
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And may I have a motion to close the executive session so we can go to our internal meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And everyone, please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united in its own right, with every being and substance for all.
Statement of adequate notice?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 6th, 2016, notice was sent to the home news chief of Star Ledger, local station, and department of this municipality by state headquarters, hoping committed in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviana?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Slater?
Here.
Mrs. Houdak?
Here.
Mr. Colobus?
Here.
Mr. Taples?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Excuse?
And Mr. Russell?
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting committee of the hold dated March 16, 2016, and the regular meeting dated March 23, 2016?
So moved.
Second. Uh, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Alvarez. Yes. Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Houdak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Here.
Mr. Taples?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Uh, yes, for the March 16th meeting and abstain on the March 23rd meeting. Superintendent's report, Dr. Renterlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I just want to give a brief HIV report. This past month, we had 11 incidents reported in the district. Five of those were validated as being true HIV incidents, four were not, and two were undetermined. The consequences included counseling, monitoring, and loss of recess, and in all instances, the victims were counseled. Some positive news to share. I'm extremely proud to announce that our district has been recognized by the New Jersey Department of Education as a K-12 model district for ESL program. This is the ninth year in a row that we've been recognized by the New Jersey Department of Education. It is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our teaching professionals and our administrative staff, and it's truly an honor to be recognized again. It means that we are the best of the best in teaching ESL in the state of New Jersey, so it is an accomplishment. I'm supposed to clap. Tried to pause and it didn't work, so... On a more serious note, in the news lately, you've probably read a lot about water and lead in water, water testing in schools. There was a major crisis in Flint, Michigan with the water, with children getting sick. Maybe about a month ago, maybe a little longer, there were several schools in Newark where the water tested for high levels of lead. When there is high levels of lead in water, it can impact children's brains that are developing, it can cause physical problems, mental problems, and things as such. As a proactive measure in the Linden School District, when this news was breaking out, we contacted our environmental contractor. They were recently out in our district where we tested all of the buildings in our district, tested water fountains, tested areas where there are kitchens. We are waiting those results, but I want to let the public know that we do take it very seriously, that's why we were being proactive, and when I do get the results, those results will be shared publicly with every parent in the district. We're certainly hoping that there's no problem, but if we do identify it, we'll be sure to remediate it right away. Now, onto my favorite thing. We have a lot of people in the audience tonight who are recorders, students and professional staff, but I like the students more, so we're gonna start with our students tonight. I might want to ask if the board members would come down and join me? contributions to our school district, and we also have our district teachers of the year and education service professionals of the year. For the student groups and teams, I'm going to do a brief introduction, I'm going to then ask the coach or advisor to come up and call up each student individually. I will shake your hand, a board of education member will hand you a certificate, and then you're gonna stay up here so we can take a group picture so we can put you on our district Facebook page, okay? So did you know, ladies and gentlemen, that Linden Public Schools, we teach Russian?
Yes.
Yes, we do. In fact, Russian is one of those five critical languages that's been identified by the U.S. Homeland Security as a critical language, one that should be taught, one that should be learned. We are very proud of our world language department here at Linden High School, and tonight, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the Russian Olympiad students. Now, for 20 years, we've had students who've been competing in the New Jersey Contest of Spoken Russian, which is held at Drew University. This year, on Monday, March 21st, 2016, we had nine students, under the guidance of Mrs. Bojana Schultz, participate. One student won two gold, I'm sorry, we had two gold medal winners, six silver medal winners, and one bronze medal winner. The state Olympiada of spoken Russian, it's a challenging, it's a unique type of program that's only for New Jersey schools that offer Russian. For our performance, we have gained the trust and respect from national institutions such as organizations as the ACTR and AATSEEL. Our Russian program was also recognized by several American universities. Their doors are open for any of our students who plan to pursue a career in the field of the Russian language, and because of our longtime relationship with Drew University and our achievements, Professor Carol Ewing, the head of the Russian Language Department at Drew, is inviting our students to continue studying the language under her supervision. That's pretty cool. So at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Bojana Schultz. I'm going to give you a certificate, Mrs. Schultz, because without you, we would not have, our students would not have this opportunity. Congratulations.
Thank you. Joanna Ansate. Gold medal. Gold medal. Silver. 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 And Nelson Valente. Five.
Linden High School. The fact that these students, from all different backgrounds, are learning Russian and winning medals all the way. It's tremendous achievement. Congratulations. The man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Deveraux, would you come up and join me, please? Mr. Deveraux is an unbelievably talented artist, an incredible athlete back in his day, although he'll tell you who still is today, right, Mr. Deveraux? But he's also our girls' track coach, and this year, we have a young lady by the name of Ayanna Jenkins, who's All-American. Ayanna Jenkins is an All-American and is ranked in the top 15 sprinters in the whole state of New Jersey. She holds the record, she holds our school record for the 55-meter dash, she's also a member of the record-breaking 4x100-meter relay team, that's the team I was on, I'm sorry, the 4x200-meter relay and the shuttle relay team. This year, Ayanna surprised everyone, probably except her coach and mom and dad, when she became the North Jersey Section 2 Group 4 State 55-meter champion. Stay tuned. At this time, she is still undecided where she's gonna go to school next year, but she does have several colleges and universities that are interested in her and recruiting her and willing her, so we know that Ayanna will continue to be successful in the future. Can I have Mrs. Birch, please? Can Ayanna Jenkins and her parents please come up? Also, just wanted to let you know, Ayanna just signed with AIC, American International University, so she'll be going on the tracks, college to AIC. We're a pretty good bowling team, too, now. At this time, could I have Coach Sherry Bazano join me up here? For gentlemen, to present this certificate to you for an outstanding coaching cap this evening. So, this year, it seems like, seems like we're doing this every year, which is pretty good. This year, our varsity bowling team were the Central Jersey Winter Class of Champions. And even bigger than that, they were the North Jersey Section 2 Group 4 Champions. And we also have a young lady by the name of Michelle DeCasky, who was the Union County Girls' Individual Champion. Coach Bazano's gonna say a few words and then call her team. Can I have, um...
First of all, I'd like to thank the Linden Board of Education for recognizing us, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Renterlin, for recognizing us as well. What's very unique about our team is that we're a co-ed team, and to compete on the level that we have been and be so successful with a mixed team is just outstanding. Our female bowlers are top-notch, and not to take anything away from my boys, because they're amazing themselves, but it's truly a testament to the dedication of these athletes and the hard work that they put in every year. James Fostinos?
First and last, number three.
George Galvez?
Does the whole team play baseball?
Alexis Dolko?
And I'd like to also give this to Michelle DeCasky for winning the girls' individual championship. First time ever, her older brother won it as well, his junior year, as safe as her alone, see if he can get it done senior year, Michelle.
Coach Bazano? I got two here. This must have been from last year. It's the first year we've had a good basketball team in a while, so it's nice to see the basketball team come back. Basketball team had an unbelievable season, brought a lot of recognition to our high school, to our community, and what I tell the players, anytime I've ever had a chance to have an individual conversation with them or Coach Calicchio, is that because of the notoriety that basketball has, because of how much it's in the newspapers, it's on NJ12, because it has been known for years now for having a high-quality basketball team, that wherever they go, people watch them, people judge them, and everywhere they go, they continue to impress me. They represent Linden very well. I'm not talking about on the basketball court, I'm talking about as young men, and that makes me very proud. A lot of that credit goes to the head coach, Phil Calicchio. Coach, would you join me up here, please? Coach, have you first certificate that you've ever received? I want to add that Coach Phil Calicchio was named the NJ.com New Jersey Coach of the I'm gonna ask Coach to introduce his players first, and then we'll recognize the other coaches and managers that we have here in New Jersey.
Thank you, Dr. Renterlin. It's always nice to be honored by our Board of Education, it means we had a great season. I always say I have the greatest job in New Jersey, I coach the best kids in the state of New Jersey. It's real easy for me, I just, they prop me up, I yell a little bit, and we win games, so... So, I sometimes think I get a little bit too much credit, my assistant coaches are the best in the country, in my opinion, and like I said, we have the best kids in New Jersey at Linden High School, not just in basketball, but in everything.
I didn't tell you what they want. We'll start with, yeah, they want the easy one. North Section 2 Group 4 Champ. And they were the North New Jersey State Champions, of all the north. Then they wanted to play some more, so then they became the Group 4 State Champions. And then, they were a Tournament of Champions finalist, one of the final two teams remaining in the entire state of New Jersey, and the, 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 Thank you, and congratulations to all the other teams and award winners tonight. I was just checking to see if they're in any kind of order. Apparently they're not. So we're gonna do our best here. Um, it's great to have our students and honor them tonight, but we all know that this institution runs and does great things because of the people who work for us. So tonight, uh, we're going to recognize and honor the outstanding contributions that our teachers and educational professional services staff make. Uh, the New Jersey Department of Education each year recognizes teachers. Uh, this is, uh, it's called the Governor's Teachers Recognition Program. And it's a celebratory program that integrates the Teacher of the Year program with the Governor's Teacher and Educational Services Professional Recognition Program. Its purpose is to recognize the state's best teachers and educational services professionals. This program highlights educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching, and the important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. Further, it seeks to attract public attention to the positive aspects of our educational system. So tonight, we honor the people in our district who really make a difference. The people who work with our students every day. The people who love our kids, who love your kids. The people who teach them, who provide a shoulder for them to cry to, who sometimes just listen to them when they're having a bad day. So I'm proud to introduce to you tonight the Lyndon School District Teachers of the Year and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. And we'll start at school number one, Teacher of the Year, Paul Burn. Uh, the Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number one, uh, who is a developmental reading and literacy support teacher, Lauren Rosenfeld. Wait a second, wait a second. This is exciting. Not only can you get a certificate, can I show? Wait, wait for it. This is exciting. I know you're, I know you wanna get to the deal. You get a mug. That says Teacher of the Year with your name on it and our Lyndon Public School logo that was created by our students. They won't let me give you any money, a trial. From school number two, Teacher of the Year, Physical Education, Mike Firestone. Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number two, a Speech Language Specialist, Karen Wazowski. Teacher of the Year from school number four, Teaching Grade Three, Kimberly Garland. Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number four, a Paraprofessional, Antoinette Carruthers. Teacher of the Year from school number five, Teacher of Grade Five, with his second award tonight, Mr. Marty Louk. Uh, Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number five, the School Social Worker, Mrs. Joanne Peterson Tyler. Teacher of the Year from school number six, a Resource Teacher, Jennifer Reddew. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number six, a Paraprofessional in Resource Grades One and Five, Susan Ortiz. Teacher of the Year from school number eight, Teacher of Grade One, Kim Pichiana. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from school eight, and also, he works a little bit at nine, too, and I'm not gonna take that away from him, instrumental music teacher, Michael Clark. Sweet Ex Burke, she's Burke. Teacher of the Year from school number 10, Kindergarten Teacher Extraordinaire, Mrs. Laurel Valero. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number 10, Developmental Reading and Literacy Support Teacher, Diana Carvada. Uh, I apologize, is school nine? Teacher of the Year from school nine, now I have to make up for it. I happen to be the principal of school nine. Yes, I've won that in my life, yes. And I can personally attest to the amount of dedication that this teacher has because she was there before me and she was there after me, and I was there all the time. And she was always there later than me, always making sure her students had what she needed, what they needed, and always doing what was in the best interest of students. Fourth grade teacher, school number nine, Teresa Regard. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from school number nine, Paraprofessional, Mrs. Sherry Orford. Teacher of the Year from McMadness Middle School, Teacher of Mathematics, Christine Miscoff. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from McMadness, could not be here with, uh, could not be here with us tonight, but I'd still like to recognize her, Norma Torres Migo, Paraprofessional. Teacher of the Year from Soul Middle School, Resource Teacher, Laurel Bonjor. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from Soul Middle School, Math Coach, Linda Williams. Last but not least, Lyndon High School, the Teacher of the Year, Social Studies Teacher. Proud to say that at one point in time, I was her mentor. Should've won this a long time ago, Mona P. Gonzalez. And the Educational Services Professional of the Year from Lyndon High School, School Social Worker, Miss Annabelle Lewis. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize, um, I think we have every principal here tonight. I think we have almost every principal here tonight to honor their Teachers of the Year, and that says something about you guys, and it also says something about your building leaders. But you also have colleagues, uh, family members that came out to support you. So how about a round of applause for those people who came out to you guys? So I'd like to give the Lyndon Public School National Teacher and Educational Professionals of the Year. Congratulations. Is Karen Wazowski here? No. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Ladies and gentlemen, we can take your conversations to the outer lobby, please. We need to continue our meeting. I ask all the board members to please return back up to the stage. We do have to continue. I appreciate it, thank you very much. Dr. Obertuzi, do you have anything else for your superintendent's report?
Mr. President, my report is concluded, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Attorney Committee, uh, I think there's one, sorry, two items for approval this evening. Mrs. Tudek, would you move those?
Okay, Attorney Committee, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, presents the following motions to Lyndon Board of Education for approval. Number one is to approve the resolution to approve the shared service agreement between the Lyndon Board of Education and the City of Lyndon. And number two is, um, the superintendent recommends that the student be placed on a long-term suspension for the remainder of 2015, 2016 school year. Mr. President, I move items one through two and respectfully ask for some.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Tudek?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Tubalis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Tudek. Curriculum Instruction Report, Mrs. Beviano?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following 49 motions to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. Items one through 10 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of... determination of out-of-district placements, adjustments to tuition, the approval of payment for related services as per child studying team evaluations, the transportation of students, determination of home instruction services, the approval of summer remedial reading program, and the approval of contract for trinitas for occupational and physical therapy services. Items 11 and 12 approve salary rates and scheduled payments for the extracurricular activities listed. 13 approves the start dates for fall athletic practice sessions. 14 through 17 approve the enrollment of the Linden High School in NJSIAA. Authorizes the payment of dues and approves participation in football playoffs and wrestling championships. 18 and 19 grant permission for the athletic department to conduct a summer weight training program and summer workout sessions. 20 approves use of vantage form relief as an online sports participation registration application. 21 grants approval to purchase championship plaques for the teams' individuals listed. 22 amends board action on past CNI reports. 23 authorizes curriculum writing. 24 adopts curriculum. 26, 27, and 28 grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. 29 approves district field trips. 30 and 31 approve training for district staff. 32 and 33 recognize and congratulate the Teachers of the Year and Educational Service Professionals of the Year in their respective schools. Item 34 approves 2016-17 back-to-school nights. 35 grant permission for a staff member to conduct their internship with the child study team to fulfill graduate coursework. 36 approves District 2016 Summer Reading List. 37 approves early dismissal with no lunches served for Linden High School students on May 26, 2016. Item 38 approves the submission of the ESVA Accountability Action Plan 2015 Secondary Measures and Assurances to the Union County Interim Superintendent. 39 approves Therapy Source LLC provides speech services for ESY 2015. Item 40 grants approval for 16 Italian students and four chaperones to visit from Tivetta and Valotta, Italy, as part of the Italian Service Learning Program. 41 approves LHS students to volunteer in the ESL Summer Tutorial Program. 42 approves the administration of the oral language stamp test. 43, 44, 45 approve the 2016-17 marking period dates, grade posting dates, and elementary conference dates. 46 and 47 approve the District's 12-month employee calendar and summer work hours. 48 claims the week of May 2nd through May 6th as National Teacher Appreciation Week to be recognized and celebrated in the Linden public schools. 49 approves the Superintendent's determinations and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the March 23, 2016 regular meeting. Mr. President, I move curriculum and instruction, items 1 through 49, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Viviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes, but no. A yes on all, no on number 36. May I speak, Mr. President?
You may.
I'm saying no on number 36 only because it's not that I don't agree with the children reading because I think it is very, very important that they do read and broaden their horizons. I am just not for the projects in the form that they're in right now. So I would hope to see that we can change that in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Hudek?
I vote yes on all except for number 36 and I'm concerned about the projects as well.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Viviana. Management and Operations, Ms. Hudek?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are 37 items. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 37 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number 1, Art of Retirement. Dr. Rubitose?
Thank you, Ms. Hudek. This is the time of year for retirement and sad to see these staff members go. Suzanne Vermonte, who I've known for many, many years, has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 31 years. She was appointed as a kindergarten teacher at School Aid in 1985, and she's still at School Aid, teaching and loving the children. Helen Casas worked with the Linden Board of Education for 19 years. She was appointed in 1997 as a part-time school aide, and since her appointment, she's been an aide in a pre-kindergarten class at School 5. Deborah Conti is a secretary who's worked in the District for 26 years. She was appointed officially first as a secretary with Pupil Personnel Services, and in 2003, she was transferred to School Number 1. Sandra Vines has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 33 years. She was appointed in 1983 as a paraprofessional at Soul Middle School. Jane Kushner has worked for the Board of Ed for 16 years. She was appointed in 2000 as a part-time school aide at School 10, and in 2009, she was transferred to School 4. Gregory Martucci has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 46 years. Greg was appointed in 1970 as a social studies teacher. He was also a vice-principal at McManus and principal at Soul Middle School and vice-principal at Soul Middle School. Fran Malik has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. She was appointed in 1993 as an English teacher at Linden High School. And Joseph McCarrals worked for the Board of Ed for 40 years. Joe was appointed in 1977 as a math teacher at Soul Middle School. He worked for a time at Linden High School. In 2006, he became the principal of School 10 and later, principal of Soul Middle School. I congratulate all of the retirees. I want to thank them all individually for their passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden and wish you all the best in your retired life. Thank you, Ms. Hudek.
Thank you, Dr. Rubitose. Number 2 is to amend board action. Number 3 is the resignation of staff. Numbers 4, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, 28, and 37 are all appointments. Number 5 is leave of absences. Number 6 is to approve the transfer of staff. Numbers 7, 8, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all reappointments. Number 9 is to authorize the execution of the annual employment agreement for the 2016-2017 school year for unclassified personnel that are listed. Number 10 is pursuant to the provisions of Title 18A 2810, reappoint and award an employment contract to the non-tenure-certificated teaching staff listed for 2016-17 school year. And that's Part A. And Part B are for the 12-month employees. Number 11 is to approve the assignment upon the return from leave for the 2016-17 school year as listed. Number 17 is to approve the following positions to accompany all middle and high school concerts for the 2015-17 school year. Number 26 is to approve the conduct... approval to conduct a 6th grade orientation program at McManus Middle School on May 12, 2016, and Soul Middle School on May 12, 2016 for the current 5th grade students who will be promoted to the 6th grade in the 2016-17 school year. Number 29 is to approve additional summer work for June 27, 2016 to August 26, 2016, for the following counselor at the per diem rate. The date is to be decided by counselor and principal. Number 30 is to grant approval to create the FAV Fashion Club at Linden High School for the 2015-17 school year with one advisor and two volunteers. Number 31 is the motion to eliminate the position of part-time nurse for reasons of efficiency and economy effective June 30, 2016. Number 32 is authorize the collection and donation of sick days for the employee number listed. Number 33 is to approve not offering an employment contract for the 2016-2017 school year to the non-tenure professional staff member that the name is in the hands of each board member. Number 34, whereas Superintendent Schools has recommended that the employment adjustment and increments for the employee number listed whose name is on record in the office of the superintendent be withheld for the school year 2016-17. And whereas the board has considered common statements and recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools. Number 35 is also whereas Superintendent Schools has recommended that the employment and adjustment of increments for the employee number listed whose name is on record in the office of the Superintendent of Schools be withheld for the school year 2016-17. And whereas the board has considered the common statements and recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools. Number 36 is to approve the following job descriptions. And, Mr. President, I move items 1 through 37 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Viviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Hudek?
I vote yes on all, but I need to abstain on a leave of absence on number 5, Sharon Seaberg.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, and I'll accept number 37. I rather number 8, Rose Lee Colvis. My abstain in that.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, on all, abstain on number 14.
Thank you, Ms. Hudek. Support Operations, Mr. Tappoleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Visit Administrator, Board Secretary, presents the following 42 finance motions and 7 facilities motion to the Board of Education for approval. Under Finance, items 1 through 6 are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the Visit Administrator/Board Secretary certifications as of March 31, 2016. No line item counts exceed the amount appropriated or over expended. Board Secretary's report for the month of March 2016. Authorizations for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for April 2016. Draw warrants in the amount specified in paper the person's name and the list of transfers and adjustments for the month of March 2016. Item 7 is a Treasury report for the month of March 2016. Item 8, Student Activities Report for Linden High School for the month of March 2016. Item 9 is to amend organization meeting agenda. Item 2, dated January 4th, calendar for board meetings. Items 10 through 24, 41 and 42 are acceptance of funds from the New Jersey Department of Education for the NCLB, IDEA 21st Century Grant, IDEACCLC Consolidated Grant for the period of July 1st through 2015 through June 30, 2016, and August 31, 2016. $31,092 from the State of New Jersey Department of Education for Perkins Secondary Non-Competitive FY15 Grant from the State of New Jersey Department of Education Services under Chapters 192 and 193. Acceptance of funds for IDEA 2016. Approve the carryover funds for IDEA 2015 in the amount of $2,827,594 from the New Jersey Department of Education for ECPA Preschool Aid for the 2016-17 school year. Funds for the ads in the Danny A. Rubitose EDD Superintendent Scholarship Fund First Annual Fundraiser Dinner, ad journal, and funds for the Superintendent Scholarship Fund. $500 from Confinium in support of the annual ROTC Scholarship Fund. $360 from Measurement in Durham, North Carolina as a substitute reimbursement. $70 from School 10, parent for repair of damaged instrument. $25 for the employees... from the employees of Phillips 66 Bayway Refinery for full-page ad in the Soul Middle School Musical Ad Program Book for the production of Seuss School Junior. Items 25 through 35 are to approve the contract with Punjab Restoration Washington, New Jersey for masonry restoration-related work for School 9, McManus Middle School, the Academy of Science and Technology, based on a low bid received April 5, 2016. Contract with Integrity Roofing of Rollway for the roofing replacement and related work services at School 4 and 8 based on the bid received April 20, 2016. A contract in the amount of $9,472.80 with AccuScan Edge Water for the scanning and digitally storing employee benefit records. Contract renewal with the National Weather Station, LLC, Kedavra Airport. A contract with Canvas by Infrastructure Inc. and Structure. Soul Lake City, Utah, provide learning management systems in grades K through 12 for 16-17 school year. Contract in the amount of $8,708 with environmental remediation management for collecting and sampling water throughout the district for lead contamination. The Kennelworth Coordinated Transportation Services for Linden Students Attending Kennelworth Choice Program at David Bradley Middle High School for the 16-17 school year. Approve the following resolution for the school year for the Coastal Learning Center for them not having to charge families for the meals provided and not having to apply for reimbursement from the Child Nutrition Program with Essex Regional Ed Services Commission for transportation, school year for special ed and vocational students. An additional aid on the Valani Bus Route SE 2B beginning March 22 through May 30. Approve the following renewal routes for student transportation for the 16-17 school year. School transportation room contracts, regular special ed. A, B is a special ed transportation to and from Developmental Learning Center Warren, New Jersey for the period of July 1 through June 30. July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, at the per diem rate with KNS Transportation Patterson. C is the extended school year transportation for special ed. D is field trip pricing for 54 passing school bus. E is the field trip pricing for coach buses and after-student team transportations for the 16-17 school year. Item 36, bids and quotations listed for training room supplies for the 16-17 school year. The quotation opening date was April 5. Item 37 declares the following as surplus equipment obsolete and/or unusable to be disposed of in accordance with district policy. Item 38 is to approve the resolution of the Board of Ed for the Linden District Support and Linden Safe Roots to School Project and application for safe roots to school funding. So the first thing to do is finance items 1 through 38 and 41 and 42. I move those items and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Viviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Hudek?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
With somebody who's...
I move items 38 or 39.
Second, yeah.
I move 39 and 40.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Viviana?
Yes.
Ms. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Ms. Hudek?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Facilities, items 1 is to amend board action on past Support Operations Reports. Items 2 through 6 are use of facilities and no charges requested by J.P. Parrow, Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School 4, and Rodriguez, Principal School 5, and Morgan, Services Director from Pontonian, and D. Williams, President Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item 7 is to grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall 2016. Mr. President, I move Facilities, items 1 through 7, and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call. Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School four, and Rodriguez, Principal School five, and Morgan, Services Director from Paltonian, and Dewey, as President of Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item seven is a grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall two thousand sixteen. Mr. President, I move Facilities Items one through seven and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Facilities items one is to amend board action on past support operations reports. Items two through six are use of facilities and no charges requested by J. P. Parrow, Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School four, and Rodriguez, Principal School five, and Morgan, Services Director from Paltonian, and Dewey, as President of Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item seven is a grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall two thousand sixteen. Mr. President, I move Facilities Items one through seven and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. And Mr. Topaleski, Planning and Policy, Mrs. Birch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for the first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local District policies. For a second reading, five-one-four-one-point-two-two, medical marijuana. Policy for compliance that requires a board to permit the administration of medical marijuana to a registered student by a registered primary caregiver. For second reading, four-one-one-two-point-eight slash four-two-one-two-point-eight, nepotism, board member, chief school administrator, participation in negotiations. Mr. President, I'd like to move these two and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Facilities items one is to amend board action on past support operations reports. Items two through six are use of facilities and no charges requested by J. P. Parrow, Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School four, and Rodriguez, Principal School five, and Morgan, Services Director from Paltonian, and Dewey, as President of Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item seven is a grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall two thousand sixteen. Mr. President, I move Facilities Items one through seven and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Facilities items one is to amend board action on past support operations reports. Items two through six are use of facilities and no charges requested by J. P. Parrow, Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School four, and Rodriguez, Principal School five, and Morgan, Services Director from Paltonian, and Dewey, as President of Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item seven is a grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall two thousand sixteen. Mr. President, I move Facilities Items one through seven and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Facilities items one is to amend board action on past support operations reports. Items two through six are use of facilities and no charges requested by J. P. Parrow, Principal Soul Middle School, and Catillon, Principal School four, and Rodriguez, Principal School five, and Morgan, Services Director from Paltonian, and Dewey, as President of Linden Cultural and Heritage Committee. And item seven is a grant permission to Linden Tigers Pop Warner to place lawn signs on school grounds for advertising early registration for football and cheerleading for the fall two thousand sixteen. Mr. President, I move Facilities Items one through seven and seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. Reports of Special Committee's Delegate, State Delegate, Mr. Topaleski?
Uh, yeah, there will be a Delegate Assembly meeting later in, in May, and I think it's the middle of the month. I did email six different resolutions that are being presented to the Delegate Assembly for consideration. Without going through each of them, the main, the main thrust of, one of them has to do with the, the way they determine graduation. And right now, projected method of graduation in the year two thousand twenty-one will be based solely on PAR, and the, the portfolio method, I believe. Right now, as it stands, there are any number of tests, standardized tests that can be used for graduation, and the resolution recommends that the New Jersey School Boards actively go to the State Board of Education and the legislature to continue the way it exists now, so that graduation isn't reliant on one test. There are a number of other items. If no one contacts me, I, it's my plan to support the six items. I was on the, the committee that brought those items forward to the total Delegate Assembly. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Can I delegate to Mrs. Hudeck?
No, no report. Oh, wait a minute.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Last Wednesday, Mr. Alvarez, Mrs. Viviana, Mrs. Blani, and I, and Mr. Topaleski, attended the legislative session for the Union County meeting at the Westwood. Assemblyman Kennedy spoke to us. Assembly Jerry Green was there as well, and Assemblyman Holly sent a representative to, to talk to us. So it was a very informative evening, and it was good evening.
Thank you. EST for parents, Mrs. Viviana?
We meet tomorrow night at six-thirty in the Administration Building.
Great, thank you. ESC for students, Mr. Topaleski?
Uh, we were supposed to have the meeting last Wednesday, but they were still testing, so that's been moved to Wednesday coming up.
Great, thank you very much. And ESC for special education?
No, Thursday, no.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Any unfinished business?
Mr. Russell, could I just take a moment? I want to congratulate Trish Tardavita's in the audience tonight. She's being appointed as the Secondary Supervisor of Language Arts in the District. Congratulations, Trish, Dr. Tardavita. Congratulations. She's a veteran administrator. She's getting a, she's getting a new job, a little bit of a promotion. Jen Smith is the Director of Elementary Language Arts and Federal Programs. Congratulations to... And no congratulations for the people who are getting transferred. Just getting transferred. Thank you.
Board member comments, new business? I'm sorry, Mrs. Birch?
Yes, I have new business. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to abolish the current dress code policy for the upcoming school year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and replace it with a new and revised dress code. I'd like to direct the attorney to work with the Superintendent to create a new dress code policy for the new school year of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Is there any discussion?
Board members, discussion?
Okay, seeing that, Mr. President, I'd like to move this motion and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
I ask that the Policy Committee meets with the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent to go over changes and discussions as soon as you guys can set clocks together.
I can have it for first reading on the mayor's table, Mr. Russell.